Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Red Hook Town Board meeting of Wednesday, March 22 at 7:30 p.m. Would you be kind enough to join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, folks. I would like to show the folks at home. One second, if you would, I just want to get an audio going here. Recording of the meeting, if I could. Very good. And tonight's agenda for the folks at home. Tonight we'll be discussing a continuation of the community choice aggregation. First item on the agenda, we have a resolution approving a performance bond reduction for Tradition at Red Hook. What that essentially is, is a ministerial act. Developers put up money as collateral to ensure that they complete aspects of developments, and that often comes in the form of a bond. And so when that work is completed, or at least partially completed, they can request the bond to be reduced. We're going to discuss the connection between the two REC parks, the original REC Park East, we'll call it, and REC Park West, a little tangent along Fruit Bud Lane. Just a little bit of an update, really nothing much to report, but an update on the Home Rules to Limit Authorization Request up in Albany. An update also on the EV vans, where it stands with the bids that we've received. We have a resolution authorizing a settlement, which is a property tax assessment case. And we have one or two things to do, reorganization, and then Department Committee and Board reports. Good, okay. How do we pull this down? There we go. Or not? Well, that's not good. We'll have to back out, and if folks, if you would, pull back in here. The HTML is the good one. It's slow going. Well, taking a little while to upload. There we go. Okay. We start out tonight because we did not have our first meeting of the month because of the snowstorm with the supervisor's report. We begin this period. We have some updates with the Central Report as well. A balance, opening balance of $9,092,000, receipts of $1.27 million, dispersments of $1.34, closing balance of just over $9 million. You have the variance reports. You have some budget adjustments that have been prepared for you by Conroy, Parkport Keeper. Are there any questions on that? The AUD has been submitted and accepted by the Commissioner's office. So for the current period, we have... Let's roll down to that. Here's the next month's statement for the current period. Beginning balance, this is February, of $8.7 million, receipts of $2.6. This is tax collection season, obviously. Capturing dispersments of $704,000. The closing balance of $10,597,000. Here are additional budget adjustments. Were there any questions about the budget adjustments, folks? Okay, hearing none, and I'm sorry, it's rolled a little bit ahead there, the Deanna's report. If not, would somebody like to make a motion to approve the supervisor's report? All in favor? I myself, very good. Deanna, would you be kind enough to give the town clerk's report, please?
The town clerk's report for the period of February 1st to February 28th, 2023, total local shares remitted to the supervisor, $4,064.04. Amount paid to New York State Agriculture and Markets for the spay-neuter program, $24. Amount paid to New York State Department of Health for marriage licenses, $90. Amount paid to New York State Environmental Conservation for hunting and fishing licenses, $51.96. Total local shares remitted, I'm sorry, total state, county, and local revenues, $4,212. And I hereby certify that vouchers numbered 30177 to 30256, processed in the month of February 2023, are inaccurate reporting of the abstracts approved for payment by the town board.
Very good. Is there a motion to accept the clerk's report?
No.
Second. All in favor? I... Very good. Okay. Announcements. We are going to have, going out from my office tomorrow, a complete list of all the spring events. We have quite a number of them. Cleanup Day is now scheduled for April 15th. Because it's a free event, and we'll all be broke by paying our taxes on the 15th. We then have, on April 22nd, we have Repair Cafe. We have E-Waste, also on the same day. Repair Cafe is in the Community Center. Then we have, backed by popular demand, on May 7th, we have Shred Day here at Town Hall. And obviously, Apple Blossom Day, May 13th, coming up in the community. We also have Arbor Day, April 29th. So pretty much, starting in April or mid-April, we'll have at least one or two events every weekend in the community. And you'll get something out of my office tomorrow for distribution with the dates and times and locations as well. All right. Why don't we jump into just an update on the community choice aggregation? And for the folks at home, we're not going to be making any decisions tonight on rejoining or restarting community choice aggregation. It's a matter still under negotiation as to rates and options that are available for the participant communities. But just for background, in case you're not familiar with it, years ago, New York State deregulated utilities and supply, and said residents, small businesses, you can go ahead and choose your energy supply company. And that was back in the mid-1990s. That was all well and good, but one of the weaknesses in that was that we each had to do lots of research and figure out which were the companies and the types of products that we were interested in. And we had basically no bulk purchasing power. Well, New York State woke up not that long ago, and the Public Service Commission, several years ago, authorized municipalities to step in the shoes of the utility and decide that we would act as the buyer of supply in this vehicle called community choice aggregation. It's an opt-out program, meaning that the municipality would make the determination, much like Central Hudson in this case, with where the power was coming from and what the rates were, and so on and so forth. And we had two successful contracts. The second one unfortunately ended abruptly when the supplier failed to meet the collateral obligation of the New York independent service operator, and in essence defaulted on the last two years of the three-year contract. We are still with other municipalities in litigation over that and hope to have some success in the future. So the question becomes, what do we do now for those residents who are taking advantage of the program? And rather fortunately, for that year that it was in operation, they were able to save a substantial amount of money. I think we estimated that the average household was saving upwards of $400 a year because they were joining this program. And on top of it, it was a 100% renewable energy product. So here we are now, eight or nine months later. It's time to look at whether or not we should restart this and complete, you know, if not the remainder of the three-year term, perhaps even go further. And one of the elements of this RFP is that it's not only seeking some fixed rate options, but also some variable rate options. It's not only seeking some, what we'll call, standard supply, which is, some of us would refer to as the dirty mix. It's also seeking blended, a 50% blended product, because it's getting harder and harder to find 100% renewable energy products because they're in such demand, they can't be built fast enough right now. And the renewable energy credits, which we call RECs, are in short supply as well. In addition to that, there is now this introduction of a variable, perhaps a three-month or a four-month fixed rate, which would then adjust with the market. And that could be done with either standard blended or 100% renewable. And so, working with our attorney to the town and our administrator of the program, Juul Energy, we've worked on the documents that would be necessary. We had some indicative pricing coming to Juul, and now the negotiation begins, and we hope to have some rates to discuss and to decide upon as far as how the town wants to proceed, if the town wants to proceed, with community choice aggregation for, you know, in this current period, anyway. So, Chris, could I impose upon you to maybe just walk us through a little bit the paperwork, since we will take a look at that this evening and review?
Sure. So we have, first of all, a resolution. This would not approve the pricing, but this is approving the framework for the pricing by, again, reappointing Juul as the administrator for the program. The way that this program works is that the town has a local law that was enacted under state authorization to provide for the opt-out program. And PSC has an order that establishes a framework for the municipalities who are participating and the administrators who are working with the municipalities. So all of those administrators, and I think there are about four of them, have to be approved by PSC and have to file paperwork with PSC about how they operate the administrative side of this. And they are essentially working for the municipalities, in each case. So they each work for a consortium of municipalities in different parts of the state. So this particular one, Juul, is the one that we worked with before. So we have an agreement in place now. So this would extend the agreement for an additional RFP round coming up. And so one sort of open question for the board to think about is what's the maximum term that they would want to offer for this round of, you know, of a product, if you do decide to go with it? The original RFP that went out from Juul did solicit up to 60 months, but I don't think that anybody's actually going to be doing anything nearly that long. So that's something for you to talk about. Juul also updated the Form of Electricity Supply Agreement. Last time, the last two times we participated, we signed an electricity supply agreement, which is a three-party agreement between the town, the municipal energy supplier, and Juul. And so the supplier is obligated to supply their product under the terms for the particular term and at the prices that are identified. Juul has a role as administrator facilitating communications with the public and with the, with Central Hudson, in this case. And there are obligations on the part of both of those people to observe data privacy requirements imposed both by this agreement and by PSC regulations. And then, PS, excuse me, Juul has already, before they issued the RFP, they issued an RFQ to try to pre-qualify the energy suppliers that were, had the capacity to do the project. They were mindful of the situation last year with the supplier that we did have falling out of compliance. And so they were looking to pre-verify the financial capacity of these bidders to make sure that they were going to be able to, you know, carry the load, as it were. So the resolution, when you're ready to consider it, would authorize an extended agreement with Juul and would authorize the new form of the ESA that Juul has developed to tighten up some of the provisions. It did change the pricing for Juul. Juul gets paid only by a per-kilowatt charge that is paid by the suppliers. The original charge was .0008, and it's now going to be .002. Did I get that right?
I think that's right, yeah.
Right.
Yeah, there's more work involved with this type of framework, you know, with the... And also going back out to the market more frequently.
So this establishes a process for the bidding procedures that Juul is going to be assisting with. Because according to PSC, it has to be a competitive-type arrangement. So that's what they're facilitating, is doing that. But again, in order to do it as a group, to get a group discount, hopefully, they have to coordinate, you know, what is it, 10, 12 participants?
Yeah, it keeps going up. We're up to 10 or 11 in our inner group right now. There are other groups around, depending upon how we sequence.
But this group's is about 10.
This group is 10 now. We were originally eight. So...
Municipalities.
Municipalities.
Municipalities participating in the consortium.
Yeah, 13 now.
And those that are like community power.
Yeah. So 13 right now. I mean, they're a couple, they keep coming in.
But I don't know if all of those are going to participate in this round.
Exactly.
So everybody's having the same conversation as you are about whether the indicative pricing is enough to make them feel comfortable going out into pricing and going into the deal.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So the pricing and also the fee associated with Juul, I understand, you know, they went a whole year without getting any fees associated with managing the project. And obviously, a huge amount of time spent, you know, with, with what happened with Columbia, and so on and so forth. But I think that's something we also should consider when we look at term, you know, is whether or not we want to take a look at that fee as well. I mean, I don't see us necessarily, and I don't think they went out to bid for terms that long. Nobody's giving terms that long, anyway, in this volatile energy market. But, I mean, I would support maybe up to 24 months, you know, maximum, I think.
Depending on which product.
But as far as the agreement, yeah, the agreement to allow for, I mean, we did do 36 months in our last, in our last contract.
The last two contracts, right?
The last two. Well, the last two was actually 18 months, finishing up of the 24.
Oh, okay.
We joined slightly too late to get the full 24 months of our 18 months on that.
Question. Do all the municipalities that participate have to, the terms that are, do they, do we all have to agree? Say...
They can choose their product.
They can choose whichever product.
And their term.
Okay.
It's the same ESA. It's the same terms of the agreement, but the, they, there's a menu of essentially, you know...
Suite of options, yeah.
Right. You can, you can pick, they ask for pricing of various different kinds of levels, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, what do you think, Christine, 24 and 36? Do you have any thoughts on that?
I wouldn't be surprised if anybody wants to do 36 now.
Right. Right. So should we have our agreement authorized for 24 months? Or is it safe to just have an authorization up to 36? And we can pick something less than? What do you think?
I don't know. I think I'd be comfortable up to 24.
Okay. Me too.
So the resolution that I circulated for a draft does have a blank for that, so I would put 24 months in that term of up to 24 months. It's a list of competitive bids. So that's what that would be for.
As far as the agreements and the riders, do you want to walk us through any other substantive changes? It's pretty much the same.
So that's, I mean, those are the, those are the primary changes to the rider, the fees and expenses and the form of the electricity supply agreement. And the process for doing the bidding, we have changed for the last round, anyway. So we were trying to facilitate working through this process so that the board is in charge of what's going on, but we can be very, very responsive to the quickness that the bidding process demands.
Yeah.
Because you all have to say yes at the same time. Even if you're saying yes to a 24, 12, whatever you pick, you all have to make that decision, right? Pricing goes fast with these things, so...
That's very good. And then the contract with the actual ESCO will have its own terminology, and we'll have to...
So the ESCO, right, that's what we distributed with, attached to the rider, and that's the form of the ESCO. And then what we would do is, like many contracts, we take that and fill in the, the actual pricing for the project that you select. I mean, for the, for the term that you select.
Right.
Right.
And we're going to have to do that, we're going to have to have a special meeting for that, just to select the product.
I think that's probably the best thing to do.
So, you know, one day next week, maybe, maybe during the course of the rest of the meeting, maybe take a look at your calendars and then, yeah. Before we conclude tonight's meeting, set a special meeting. All right, so I can make that selection, if you have a calendar.
Do we have a, is it an evening meeting?
We can, we can do, well, I can do whatever, as you know I live here. But for the rest of you who applied, you know, pick what works, yeah.
Do you want to do it now, or do you want to do it later?
Well, let's entertain the resolution. Shall we? Are we ready to entertain? I think so, with the term, 24 months.
Where does that go on?
So on the first page of the resolution, there, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6 paragraphs down.
Yeah, I see it.
Okay, right. And then the same in the, in the rider, then that will also be on the first page of the rider, which would say the compliant bidder would have a term of not to exceed 24 months. Okay, right at the bottom. And then otherwise, this is obviously just a form of agreement that we would, you know, prepare and complete for execution, but this is the form.
And this is Resolution Number 15, dated March 22nd, 2023. Authorizing the continuation of the community choice aggregation program. And for the folks at home, it just authorizes us to continue. It doesn't necessarily mean we will be continuing. We have to see what the pricing is before we go ahead and sign on the dotted line. This just gives us the ability to continue. And I so move Resolution Number 15. Is there a second?
Second.
A simple number? Yes, okay. All in favor? Very good. Thank you very much. That's Resolution Number 15, dated March 22nd.
I'm just getting some water.
Some water. Molly's getting water. Happy, for those of you tomorrow, happy palindrome day. Tomorrow will be 3232333. Yeah. Palindrome. I think so. While Bill is getting some water, oh, do you want to look at your, your schedule? With Tuesday, Wednesday is the one tricky one for me.
So do you...
Evening, morning?
Is there a...
I think we, I think we'd like to do this maybe the 30th or 31st.
That's the...
Maybe 30th?
Is that the win, Thursday?
Are we going to have information on those days?
I think, I think we're going to be...
Is that the pricing?
I think we're going to go pricing between 30th and the 4th.
Oh, I had, I had the 4th in my head, so maybe the earlier date is the first date. Okay.
Well, maybe we should do...
No, no, you, you probably have a more current version of the schedule than I do.
You have to do it by...
I won't be here on the 4th, unfortunately, but... Why don't, why don't we shoot for the 30th, December?
Well, I can't do it during the day on the 30th.
We can do the...
What day of the week is that?
That's a Thursday.
Yeah, sure.
Thursday. What would you like to choose the time? Earlier?
Nope.
No?
Have to be probably...
7:30?
7:30.
Okay. Special meeting. Motion to set a special meeting to consider the selection of community choice aggregation, March 30th, 7:30 p.m.
And such other matters has may become before the board, please?
And such other matters, words taken from, that may become, that may come before the board. Thank you very much, Chris.
That's your motion.
And I so move.
I'll second it.
There's a second. There's, is it the 3rd?
Aye.
She aye.
Put it in my calendar.
30th, thank you very much. Okay. That's the update, performance bond reduction. I think I explained what, what that means in layman's terms. Chris, do you want to just say what, what section of the development this is for?
So, yes, and we have a little blank to fill in because we got information from our engineer. So we have a, as you said, we have a bond currently for Section 6 of the development. A portion of which has been, a portion of the work has been completed, including work for the water and sewer. So we're relying on Dutchess County Water and Wastewater to determine their needs for the water and sewer bonds. So they approved a reduction in those. And then we rely on our engineer to review the estimate of costs remaining for work that has not been completed on Section 6. So they have reviewed that and agreed with the proposed reduction amounts. So the resolution provides for the reduction of two bonds. One is the Dutchess County Water and Wastewater bond to secure completion of water and sewer improvements, and we are dual obligation on that. And that would be a reduction to $92,013. And we have a reduction for the other tombed-poured portions, road, and so forth. And that would be reduced to $310,747. And we do have the recommendation of the engineer to that effect. And that is, so you have a blank in the third where S clause by correspondence stated March 22nd. We have a recommendation from the town engineer.
Okay. This is Resolution 16. Are there any questions about the information? Not, I so move. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, Bill?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Okay, we're now moving on to the discussion of REC Nectar. And for the folks at home, just as a reminder, we did receive a grant from Dutchess County to help us fund what we believe to be... to help us fund what we believe to be an almost three hundred thousand dollar project, which is to safely get folks from Rec Park over to Rec Park West in coordination with the county, which will be doing a crosswalk there at Linden Avenue. And so we're looking at a multimodal path, it will be a paved surface. Um, it will be alongside the northern part of Fruit Bud. And we, uh, were presented with, you know, by the engineer, I think, at, um, previous meetings, some options. And what we're looking at now is the idea, here's, uh, one of the original drawings, I believe, is this, uh. No, I apologize, I think it comes up here, that's the west part. We'll get there. Okay, um, let me see if I can blow this up. This, yeah, this may be the final, um, solution, so we discussed some of the options with the width of the roadway, um, sidewalk, um, basically, uh, work that would need to be done on adjoining landowners in order to accommodate, uh, eight feet, as well as a curb to separate out the bikers, walkers, pedestrians from the vehicles coming in and out. And in discussion, uh, with our engineers, our highway superintendent, um, we are looking at the option of having a twenty-foot, uh, paved roadway, um, and an eight-foot multimodal, and not, um, having to do any grading on the adjacent, adjoining landowners. And this is, uh, what I'm showing you here is on the eastern side of Linden Avenue. You see over here is, uh, the proposed crosswalk. We would then get across Linden into Rec Park West with the multimodal path here, and then continue down, um, the, uh, stone, stoned dust pathway. This will be asphalt. Into the park here. Here's a diagram further into Rec Park. Oops, that's not, let's try, shall we? Six, six-inch curb.
Along the whole path.
Uh, along the whole, yeah, along the whole path. Um, there will be a small section where there'll be a grass strip in between the curb and the asphalt where there's more room. I'm not sure that, that is easily visible. Which portions of, let's see if I can highlight it here.
I think section three is just as you're leaving the park. Section two then is the next section, and section one is closer to, is that helpful?
Section two is the one with the grass strip. Here's section three. So it's hard to see, I think, at home, even if I blow it up. Suffice it to say there'll be a small area where there'll be a grassy strip in between the pavement, and that will be just for a small portion of, of the pathway. This is, um, the least disturbance.
It's up there. Between the two driveways there.
Yep. This section here.
Mm-hmm.
The section two. Section one. Section three. And you can see the grading takes place on the town's property as opposed to, and then we'll, we'll work with the adjoining landowners, um, the three of them on their driveways to ensure that their driveways, um, you know, that there's, there's, uh, you know, negative impact to, to the driveway areas there. Any questions?
The three-foot grassy section.
Yeah.
Is that just to delineate between the, the, the road and the path for people to walk or bike on?
The three-foot grassy section which exists between those two.
Yeah.
Is something that ideally we would have loved to have done.
The entire.
The entire run, but we didn't have enough room for it. Um, but we do have a little section there.
Who's gonna maintain it? The rec department?
Yeah, the rec department, which, you know, they're just inside of that, you know, so they'll have to come out there. I don't know how thrilled they are with maintaining just a tiny little thing, but they will have their equipment right there.
Usually the homeowner, let's talk about that, usually the homeowner is responsible for any kind of grass strip that's in the median, typically.
But this is on the other side of our, this is not a sidewalk and it's on the other side of the multimodal, so.
Yeah, I know.
I mean, it could be, but.
Well.
Well, I guess my question was, purpose, I know we would have liked to, but the, the purpose is a delineation, it's like a separation between?
It, it, it is a separation, it's really just more of an, a, a, in this case.
A step, okay.
But we would have liked to have had more greenery in between.
Gotcha.
Unfortunately, we just didn't have the room to work with, without them having to, to move south.
Yes, I mean, it would have been lovely if we could have it the whole way, I guess I'm not sure if it's really gonna serve much of a purpose.
To have a little bit.
To just have that little tiny bit there, and then it does raise maintenance issues. So, but I guess we, I'd wanna look at, what's the cost impact of doing just that little piece?
Okay.
Of it? Um, as part of the whole project.
Little flowers.
And, um, I mean, we could do big planters or something.
Yeah.
Uh, and, and, uh, did, uh, so this flow, this road goes downhill to the rec park.
West.
And so with the curb, um, and did the, the engineer already look at drainage issues?
Yes.
Okay. So we don't have to put any catch basins or anything in that?
They're, they're anticipating that they can improve drainage here, some of the, some of these properties, um, have drainage issues.
It looks like there's a catch basin at the entrance to the parking lot, right?
Yeah. Yep, down here.
On this one.
Yeah, just behind the crosswalk.
Oh, right there, okay.
There it is.
Yep, all right. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so I think at this point, the next step would be, we would probably want our engineers to, to go meet, just kind of like we did with the sidewalk, with the abutters.
Mm-hmm.
And, um, just discuss with them and, you know, solicit any concerns that they would have about what's being proposed and.
Right.
And, uh, some input. It's only three property owners. Um, the other thing we've discussed, um, importantly, obviously for narrowing the roadway to twenty feet, is we no longer would wanna have people parking on, uh, Fruit Bud. There wouldn't be room for them to park on Fruit Bud, we, we increased our parking lot there.
They have to create a parking zone.
So with no parking zone, and there's some discussion about having it extend, because there's been issues not only just in that tangent, but also headed south. Maybe instituting no parking at all on Fruit Bud, and then obviously, if a property owner has, you know, their own event or their own birthday party or whatever, then, then that would be, um, I don't know that we could do that.
Parking's parking. No, you have to do this.
No parking's no parking.
They don't have to park in the rec park.
Parking is not parking.
No.
They don't have to park in, yeah, yeah.
Uh, and do we, and we got a letter from the highway department.
I think that's what they would have to do, is take it and, what's that?
We got a letter from the highway department about the roadway.
Right, and, um, uh-
Letter to the specs.
Exactly, so, so Teresa said that, um, while she would be fine to try this, um, she wants to make sure that we're not going to twenty feet on all of our roads. But our current specs with the amendment say, in particular circumstances, this being one of them, it might be appropriate to go down to twenty. I will say we already have roadways and tangents of roadways that are sixteen or eighteen.
Right, that she doesn't want us to go, and she doesn't want us to go less than twenty, which is why we can't make this wider, for instance.
Well, and I think she also doesn't want us to go twenty as a general rule.
Yes, right.
Right, but that's what she said, yeah.
Right.
I mean, and, and there'd be a decent amount of activity coming in and out of there, so I think we do wanna be mindful of turning radius and all that stuff, which I'm sure the engineers have looked at. Um, so I think that's, that's kind of where we are on this project, it's, it's looking good, I'm very excited about it, um.
So are we at a point where we wanna prepare no parking ordinance? Or are you gonna have some conversations with the neighborhood about the, whether that goes just to the rec park or whether it goes south?
Um, I, I, I think we want to, uh, prepare both and have the engineers look at both of those things and bring it back to us so that we can make some decisions about that, they might have some input vis-à-vis the entire run, uh, just the tangent. I know that the, the gentleman that owns the house just south of the entrance, he's experienced, you know, he's put up his own signs and, for example.
Parking at the park.
Right, at the park, we put up our sign to indicate to people, we have two parking lots, go to the south. Now, obviously, we have the west, people can go to the west.
Right, is it an issue the whole way, or is it just an issue with the risk fifty feet or something like that, close to the park?
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Um, yeah, and, and, uh, actually Teresa and I talked about this this morning, and, and maybe let's explore the whole, the whole run of it, I think was her, her thought. Um, let's see what the engineers say, and let's see if we can get some input from those landowners further south, whether or not they've experienced the overflow parking. Um, if we're seeing no parking on the tangent, then that could put a little more pressure that way. So I think we, we do wanna be mindful, I don't want anybody parking on anybody else's lawn, that's not what we want. So, um, any thoughts, do we wanna move forward with those things? Or any questions before we go ahead and keep this project moving? It'd be lovely to get this done this fall.
Yeah, well, I was gonna say, what's the timing do we?
Well, the county, the county's ready to do its thing from what I understand, um.
It'd be nice if we got it done before the summer.
What?
Yeah.
Both over the summer.
Yeah, so, you know, when it's very active there.
Yeah. Well, it's gonna take a little bit of work, um, but now that we don't need easements, um, you know, I think we'll be better shaped to, to move quickly.
Okay.
All right, was that a motion to go ahead and, and do all those things? Also move to have the engineers, um, make a recommendation on the no parking, to move forward and meet with the abutters, get their input. Thank you, Bill.
Aye.
Very good, thank you Christine, okay. Moving right along. There have been few things that in my eight years of being town supervisor is frustrating as getting these electric cars.
Uh-huh. Seemed like a good idea at the time.
Well, in case you're wondering when the time was, it was a two thousand and seventeen federal grant.
Yeah.
Six years?
And it was the first of its kind, uh, project with DOT, they told us, we, we've never had one of these before. Um, more importantly, it was to solve a really important need, which is to help our seniors and those with mobility issues get around our community. And, you know, when you look at some of the weaknesses we have as a, as a municipality, we've got this, you know, wonderful senior, uh, uh, development here, Red Hill Commons, and yet, you know, some of them have, um, transportation insecurity. At the time that was built, we didn't have the community center, we're funding a lot of programming, um, over at the community center, while it's not a great distance, you know, many of them cannot walk over there, especially in the, in the frigid cold. Um, and, uh, some of them are getting their meals and so on and so forth at the community center, which is an office of the aging site. So, uh, we applied for this grant, got a hundred and forty thousand or so, went out to bid, COVID hit, our, our contract that we had with the vendor, they did not perform, they kept asking for extensions, and finally came back and said, oh, well, didn't anybody tell you we canceled the contract? Literally, that was their response. Um, and so, um, there was no money in the truck voucher incentive program for us to reapply to get some matching funding. Uh, the Assienzo Foundation had, um, already authorized another fifty thousand dollars, for the folks at home, it's three hundred and some odd thousand dollars for these two wheelchair accessible lift vans, um, all electric, um. Uh, what's that? No, fifteen seats would be the, uh, class four vehicles, these running more nine, eleven, twelve, it depends on the configuration, you have the folding chair or not, but the rear lift brings up the wheelchair. Um, and so finally, we hear, yes, uh, another round of funding in truck voucher incentive program. And so, yay, we can go out to bid again, we go out to bid again, and it's a class three vehicle, and they fund every class of vehicle except for one, the class three. And so here we are, once again, now with bids, we actually only had one bid that was compliant, because it was class three, um, three hundred and sixty-one thousand. We're now starting to bump up against our funding deadline, the federal funds, which was an enhanced mobility grant. And so, a hundred and forty, let's say, fifty from Assienzo, a hundred and ninety thousand, we've got a shortfall of a hundred and seventy thousand for these two vans, and I don't, I don't know what to say, I mean, it's, it's a really bad situation that we're in. Um, not great choices, but I'm starting to think maybe the ARPA money might be something that might be good to make up the gap. I mean, I think this is a really important thing for our community.
When does that money expire?
The ARPA's good, the ARPA's good, I mean, that was revenue replacement, so it's good, that, that money's good. You know, these, our seniors and, and others have been waiting patiently, you know, for years for this to, to, to be built, um, for these to be built. And, uh, I know the needs assessment is going on, right? And I was not able to attend that session because I was in a meeting, but sure enough, what, what did we hear? We heard, you know, uh, one of the most popular things was transportation challenges for this population, and so, I, you know, I'm not gonna ask you tonight, but at our next meeting, to, to please give some consideration of whether or not, you know, the ARPA funds that we received, that this project would merit the funding. If we can find more grant funding sources, obviously that would be, um, preferential, but we, we've gotta get this done. We can't afford to lose a hundred and forty thousand, we did get grant funding. Okay.
Didn't we approve, uh, take a, a couple of-
We'll take it, uh, take our own advice and apply.
But didn't we approve, I mean, I remember a couple of meetings where, where we approved the purchase of the vans, and then there was a problem.
Right.
I mean, it just seemed like, I mean-
We had a contract with the vendor.
That's what it was.
And the vendor did not perform under the contract.
Can they claim COVID?
Came, came, what, uh, yeah, they, they claimed it was COVID related, supply chain, you name it, they needed more time, we granted more extensions, we were like, we were, you know, understanding, obviously there were supply chains, but with everything of, of mechanical nature there for a while, and, and so on and so forth. At the end of the day, they just never, and importantly, that hurt us because there was another match, um, available to us, and it was a requirement, so, not, not of the original funding, but a requirement of RFP back at the time, so, um.
So what's the deadline for the hundred and forty thousand?
I think it's the end of this year.
End of this calendar year.
So, yeah. All right. I wish I had better news, but, um.
Skip over the home rule.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll just, I'll discuss that, yeah.
Okay.
I wanted to get to the vans because there's nothing in the packet on home rule.
That's true.
It's just an update on the home rule, um, but since you brought it up, I'll tell you. I've been in touch with our state senator, Michelle Henchy, um, for the folks at home. I'll give you the one minute version because if you've been, um, following previous meetings, you already know that we have been over the years trying to get speed limit reductions on our local roads with mixed success. I would say at best DOT, um, has been stubborn about granting those requests. And, um, you know, we've decided that we needed to implore a different strategy, which is to join with our, um, colleagues in other municipalities in Dutchess County, Ulster County, and throughout New York State and ask for what other municipalities have, villages, townships within populations of a certain amount, and have the authority to mandate, you know, or to, to make the decision of what the speed limit should be, an appropriate one for future road. We had some success in the last session in Albany in that we now have the ability to take the speed limit down to twenty-five miles an hour, whereas thirty was the, uh, minimum, um, but we didn't get our authorization, our home rule. So now we're pushing for it. It's an AOT priority. If you were watching meetings for that, you know that this is probably one of the most important issues, um, in local government. We hear so much from our constituents about. I did reach out to our state senator, um, who is on the Transportation Committee. I was concerned because she didn't seem optimistic that, um, something would get passed in this session. I did also, um, speak with our Assemblymember's office today about the issue and asked them to make it a priority, um, of their office in order to get this done. So, um, that's the update. Flip that around, I would say if it's looking dismal for getting, um, legislation this year, I would suggest we entertain, I've already asked our engineers to prepare a task order at least for the two subdivision complexes, Forest Park and College Park, that we've been trying to work with for years now to get reductions. These are small subdivision roads. DOT should have nothing to say about what those speeds are. And so we, we should have task orders at our next meeting, you know, put consideration there. If, if you, uh, watch Tivoli, Village of Tivoli meetings, um, you will know that they received home rule authoriz- they are a village. They can take it down to twenty-five. They did an engineering study with, with our engineer. And they did just the other evening pass, um, a resolution to lower their speed limits to twenty-five miles an hour. So all we're asking is for the same ability to make those decisions for our constituents. Number six, it's a resolution authorizing a settlement, Article seven, Norton, uh, for the folks at home. There's a process, let me scroll, I'll scroll. There is a process for you. If you are concerned about the evaluation of your assessment, here we go, for that's the, the bid. And I will tell you, give you a heads up that you're likely to see again this year. From what I understand in my conversations with the assessor, that assessments will be trending upwards. The data reflects last summer. And if you've been watching what's happening to the real estate market in the Hudson Valley, it's been increasing in pricing. We'll see if that holds true next year and so on and so forth with what's going on. But we're likely to see, um, an increase of trending in residential, commercial vacant lands, in property valuations based upon activity that occurred, um, up until the summer of last year. If at any time you think that your property is over or unequally assessed, you have the option, obviously, to discuss it with the assessor. If you're still not satisfied, you have the option of coming in for a grievance on the fourth Tuesday of May. And there is a board of members who will review your application. And then finally, if you're still not happy, you can, in theory, um, uh, pursue what's called an Article seven, which is a legal challenge to, um, the valuation of your property. We do get, uh, a couple of these a year. And oftentimes, um, we look to have some resolution, um, as far as the valuation. Sometimes there's, there's just no, uh, there's no settlement and the valuation remains the same. But, uh, tonight what we have is an Article seven and we have reviewed and consulted with our assessor and our attorney representing us in this, um, matter. And so this is for a valuation change for property. Tax map sixteen zero three one seven. Rule one ninety-nine, evaluation to be reduced from seven twenty-seven to four fifty. I will note for the folks at home, this was a rather unusual situation where the property was well over assessed as compared to the current resale price of the property. And, um, in reviewing, um, the records, our assessor and attorney and the board felt, um, that it was warranted. And so this is resolution number eighteen, seventeen? Any questions to board members on this? Have you reviewed, we've reviewed this for some time now? Okay. Hearing none, I move resolution seventeen, authorizing the settlement of an Article seven proceeding with Norton and Norwood. And I so move, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you very much. Very good. Um, moving right along to reorganization. Um, there's only one, uh, oh, we were gonna, we were going to appoint, you know, we don't have Jacob or Julia, but we were going to appoint the chair of the Housing Committee. I don't think we did that at the last meeting, did we?
Yeah.
Okay, so. There it is. Oh, no, art's up there, so we must have done it. We must have done it. Okay. There are a couple of people who express interest in the Agriculture and Open Space Committee Advisory Committee. Chuck Mead, who's been a long-term farmer here for many, many years, back in and consulting over at what was his family farm for many years. I had asked Chuck to supply just a background for those of you who are not as familiar with him. He did submit that. For review, Amanda Vazinsky has also expressed interest. I'd like, uh, Amanda, before we go ahead and appoint her, maybe at the next meeting to supply some more background information. All we have is emails of interest and then also someone interested in assessment or review board. Just get a little more of background on the individuals before we consider them. But for Chuck Mead, um, we do have a vacancy, um, one expiring in twenty twenty-four and one expiring in twenty twenty-three. I would, uh, move that we go ahead and appoint Chuck for the one expiring in twenty twenty-four. Does that make sense? Very good, so I'll make that motion. And, uh, who would like to second that, Christine King?
Second.
Aye. Only because Christine has gone up for doodles. Well, that's another, that's another reason. Okay, all in favor? Aye. Uh, so Chuck Mead, and then I'll take up Amanda, um, at our next meeting. Just ask her to supply us that information, so we can. And we thank them both for, um, their interest. Next, uh, well, that's all I have for reorg, uh, Department and Committee reports. Okay, let's scroll, scroll. Who would like to? CAC. We're gonna have to take turns here, the turns being Eve Bell and Eve Christine, if you'd like, reading reports. Who would like to do the CAC, Christine?
Okay.
Who?
I guess I will. So, uh, this is the CAC report for March. And, um, wanted to let everybody know Earth Day is Saturday, four twenty-two. So it's gonna be the Repair Cafe and Electronic Waste Day, uh, Robert mentioned earlier, which will be at the Red Hook Community Center and the Recycling Center, both from ten AM to one PM. And they also suggest that you visit the CAC website before attending to see which volunteer repair coaches are available so that can, for repairs, and also what's going to be accepted at the e-waste day. The Red Hook Community Compost Program has been extended, so you can continue to bring your food scraps to the recycling center instead of paying for them, uh, to go to the landfill. And it says we do accept meat and bones. So that's that.
What about, what about the benefit of bringing the compost there? Not only admissions benefit, but the other benefit is coming in April.
I have that in here?
The compost comes back.
Oh, yes. Well, we'll get it back, right, and then we'll have to give it out.
We'll get it back. And then, exactly right. And so that's gonna be next month. For the folks at home, we've not only made your recycling center free access, but we've also expanded some of the things you can get done that are environmentally beneficial, including having the refrigerant removed from your ACs, the compost, um, as well as the recycling. And, um, e-waste obviously is a special thing.
Okay, and then just the other thing is the CAC passed a resolution to support the, um, Red Hook Together Subcommittee in an effort to obtain a sustainable community certification. And so, um, they state their support for a number of upcoming things that was mentioned, most of that are starting in April. So they just wanted to get that on the record.
They also have a request. They would like us to take their example, their template, which is basically a, here's how we're going to support sustainability in the community by doing these things. They would like us to ask the other committees to take a look at their mission and see how they can focus some of their activities or what steps they can take in order to advance the goals in the sustainability plan. And I'm wondering, can, would you be supportive of that if we send out a, a generic email and ask each committee how they can take a look at that and see if they can do it? Okay, all right. And you can see there's their signature and date, so they're really, you know, they're really asking folks to step up and now make a commitment. Rec Commission, Christine.
Okay, so, um, there has been a change to, um, the Dutchess County grants that we apply for each year. This is, you wouldn't think it's, it's that hard to think, but it is because all the stuff that we've used to, all of the bookkeeping and reporting previously does not now match up to these dates. So that's gonna be, um, a bit of an effort we, we had submitted, so now we have to resubmit for that. Continuing, um, maintenance on various, uh, pieces of equipment. The spring, um, getting the parks ready for spring has begun already. Maintenance is happening. They're getting ready. Their nets are already up on the courts. Lights are on, so things are happening there. The fishing contest, the annual Red Hook Rod and Gun Club will hold its thirty-fifth annual fishing contest on Saturday, April seventh, from eight to noon. And that's, they have two groups, ages five to nine and ages ten to fifteen. So that's gonna be happening this year. The second phase of improvements to the skate park have been completed, so that is up and ready to go. Still some, there's, it's still that big dirt pile there that we have to figure out how to move. That's still there.
We're working on it.
Yeah, we're gonna keep working on it. So, um, so they've been working with the Trails, the Towns Trails Committee, as well as Winnicke Land Trust. We have, um, uh, some trails that, uh, come to the rec park and, and, you know, you can go in and out from the rec park. So they are going to be doing some, um, work and some upgrades and, you know, getting the, the, what they call the mutt, mutt dispensers for people who walk their dogs to clean up after their dogs. So that will be happening this year too. And, um, they have, these are always really long reports. There's been, um, some questions about what could be done in terms of different mowing, um, things that are gonna happen over at Rec Park West. So they're working, looking into that. And, um, again, unfortunately, persons unknown have driven onto the Rec Park West area where flag football has been played and put serious ruts in the field. So that's gonna require extensive repair, uh, this spring. We have had repeated, um, problems with people driving onto the fields, both, um, by the pool area at Rec Park East, but also now in Rec Park West. So we're gonna have to, I guess, you know, come up with a long-term plan or how we can address that. And the sem, the tentative dates for the summer rec playground are going to be July fifth to August fourth. So you can begin. I know people are already beginning to look for summer camps and what's going on, so that's, get that on your, um, calendar. And, um, we had a lot of, um, activity this winter because, you know, we didn't have too much snow on the ground. So we had, people were still out using the park, uh, Rec Park East, that is. So we had more maintenance or more upkeep, I guess I should say, you know, more keeping up garbage and cleanup and whatnot than we normally have during the wintertime. And, uh, our rec director, John Kuhn, recently did a presentation to Red Hook Rotary about what's been going on in terms of the developments and improvements at Rec Park East and Rec Park West. I did that last week. Um, and I think that's about it.
I'll talk about the new garage. You know, for the folks at home, if, if you are, have not yet walked the Trails of Rec Park West, so you pull in Rec Park West, you park there by the kiosk, there's a couple of benches. You take the stone dust path down there. You enter the Winnicke Lands. We purchased a trail easement, uh, we, the town. There are two trails, a red one and a blue one. I walked the blue one for the first time. It's, it's almost completed. It's very lengthy. It's wonderful. You feel like you're in the middle of nowhere, even though you're actually in between these subdivisions. It's just a wonderful, uh, walk. I recommend, um, I recommend it highly. So, all right, well, thank you, Christine, for summarizing. How many pages is it?
Twelve.
Eleven.
Thirteen.
He writes detailed reports.
He does. The, the, the rec park does a tremendous amount of work. They get, they get through so much.
Did he mention St. Margaret's?
I didn't say anything. I was gonna say, they also handle St. Margaret's. They handle the cemetery and the red church now too. So they are really, a very, very important, um, department here in the town.
I noticed something. I don't know if you all noticed something, but the other day the county released its thirty-day draft comment, CDBG plan. And guess what project was listed on it?
Uh, the lift for St. Margaret's.
For St. Margaret's.
Yeah.
Yes.
You win the bingo. Um, so that's very exciting for, uh, those, those of you who don't already know that we are, um, doing work to, uh, repair the interior of St. Margaret's and we applied to the county. doing work to repair the interior of St. Margaret's, and we applied to the county for accessibility grants, both on the outside and the inside. And so it looks like our lift will be coming to us, you know, this year as well. So very excited about that project. Hopefully, before year's end, we'll have a wonderful facility over there for the public to utilize. Okay. So that's all the good news, Bill, you get the bad news. The police.
It's not all bad news.
No, it's not, no, the police, the police are good, the reports.
For the month of February, they report ninety-one incidents, I would say the twelve, it's really, you should subtract twelve out of that, because that's the daily, them going daily, or every other day to the school as a part of the resource officer, that's how they track it. But they had, they, they have a total, they say ninety-one, and then they have twelve in Tivoli, which are not in this report, they're done separately, but they have, Tivoli has now contracted with them to do their policing. They issued seventeen moving violations, UTTs, one parking ticket, and they made two arrests, and they will, as I do every month, point out that one of the biggest categories, and it is the biggest category in February, are welfare checks. And it's a really important service that I don't think that police departments get enough credit for, which is, you know, someone is trying to call a relative, they haven't heard from them in days, you know, elderly people, and they go and they check to make sure that people are okay, and they've saved people lives, you know, they've shown up places and someone's been unconscious on the floor. And so it's a really important activity that I think a lot of people don't know they really are, when you dial nine-one-one, or you call and say, I haven't heard from so-and-so, and I'm very worried, they go right after you, so.
Thanks, Bill.
Yeah, it's, it was not that busy a month, fortunately. And as far as the dogs, there were two dogs at large, which is not unusual, if I worry, but there's another category, which at the bottom, it explains what the other was, in that situation, where there were some complaints about somebody who was leaving their dog tethered outside to a tree in their yard. And we do have rules about that. And so they went out and spoke with the dog's owner, gave him a copy of the tethering regs, and the state, you know, were shelter dogs, and it's apparently an ongoing issue for the animal control officer, and they're going to be following up to make sure that this particular dog owner is an adherence with, with the law and regulations. So that's the other category, that's it.
Thank you very much. And Highway Department, this was referenced earlier, this is on the connector, the twenty-foot. And I'm looking for the engineer to reaffirm the twenty-foot in this circumstance. Announcements, sorry, this is a little bit out of order this time. Was that all we have?
That is all we have, yeah. We didn't get, we didn't get the Building Department, huh?
We didn't get Building Department, no, we didn't this time, so we'll have to get it for the next meeting. That's what we have for tonight, except for, we are going into executive session to discuss employment of a particular individual, and a matter under negotiation, the discussion of which could affect the purchase price.
Is this employment history of the particular person?
Excuse me? The hire and fire, I'm so sorry, the hire and fire of a particular individual, thank you.
You're welcome.
Before we conclude tonight's meeting, we'll be back if we take any action, but for now, good night, and thank you very much for joining us, everyone. And we will see you March thirtieth, if you'd like to join us for the special meeting. Otherwise, I think we're here back again April eleventh, I believe that's the date, and we want to wish you a happy Easter if you celebrate that holiday. At this time, I'd like to make a motion, we go into executive session. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good night, everyone, thank you very much.